Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Reed. Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Kerstetter.
Here.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Stam.
Here.
I'll stand for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear God and Father, we are grateful, grateful for this good weather that you have blessed us with, God, and grateful for the men and women that are here, that are serving on the council, serving in other capacities, and here to just represent their community and their perspectives. And Father, we just pray for your discernment. We pray that you will work in each and every one of us to be able to be authentic, to be able to use discernment with our words and our actions to better this community, God. We know the involvement of the families, the men and the women is what make this community move forward, God, and we are so grateful for the gifts, the time, the talents that you have given us to be able to serve. Father, we just ask for your blessing on this meeting, on this agenda, on the conversations that we'll have, God, and that you would lead out on us and allow us to continue to serve passionately. Father, we love you, and we ask all these things in the undefeated name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to the approval of tonight's agenda. Any questions or changes?
Motion to approve agenda as presented.
Second.
Have a motion, a second to approve tonight's agenda as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor, signal for raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Moving on to the minutes of the November 4th meeting. A motion to approve.
Move to approve the minutes.
Minutes of November 4th, 2025, regular council meeting is presented.
Second.
Have a motion, a second to approve the minutes from the November 4th, 2025 meeting. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signal for raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Moving on to presentations, fleet management presentation. That's a surprise. I thought Lloyd was doing that.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Tonight, we're going to do a short presentation on some changes that Valley Center is wanting to do with the fleet management program. Just give you a real quick history. For most of the city's history, up until about 2021, we always just paid vehicles in cash, and that worked for a lot of our years, but around 2021, we realized that our fleet was aging. We had a number of vehicles that needed updating, and we were approached by Enterprise Fleet Management to take over our fleet services under kind of a new lease-to-own type model. Overall, that's been pretty successful. Our fleet now is modern, vehicles are maintained, we no longer need to keep a full-time mechanic on staff. However, I've kind of been studying this for about the last year, and a lot of our contracts are at a very high interest rate that they kind of hide inside the contract. So my team has kind of been studying how we could possibly take this process and take the best parts of Enterprise Fleet Management, basically bring it in-house and try to do it ourselves. So here's some of the things that we kind of came up with. So I'll first of all kind of explain the enterprise model. You order vehicles directly from Enterprise, they own dealerships around the nation. Vehicles often take four to six months, they can order both Ford and Chevy. They are able to track down very hard to get vehicles like Tahos. All leases are three to five years. You make one monthly payment, one bill to Enterprise for all the vehicles. Valley Center currently finances 29 different vehicles through Enterprise Fleet Management. They also tell you when's the ideal time to sell the vehicle. We have some vehicles that if they have enough equity, it makes sense to kind of get them when the market's hot. This is a pretty good service that they do. If you ask them to, they will take the vehicles to auction and sell it for you, and they will also handle the title and registration process. There is a monthly fee for all 29 vehicles that they charge for some of these services that I just listed. What do we like about the process? Like I said, our fleet's new, it's well-maintained, it's very ordered, easy to order vehicles. We have one monthly payment, they tell you the optimum time to sell, they handle the delivery, the registration, and the disposal process of the vehicles, and the Valley Center directors really like, and I've heard from every one of them, a fleet of new and reliable vehicles. They did not want that to go away. What do we not like about Enterprise and the interest rate? The lease interest rate is hidden inside the contract. They don't give you either the interest rate or the money factor, which allows you to calculate the interest rate. I have calculated that the lease contracts are in the range of eight to 11.5%. Believe it or not, that's actually gotten a little bit different. I turned this into Christie last Wednesday, and I've done a lot more research on this. Every contract that we have in Valley Center is at the minimum of 9%, and we have a couple of vehicles as high as 15%. In addition, there are all sorts of different fees for these vehicles, including when you pick the vehicle up, when you dispose of the vehicle. These are profit centers for their company, and it can take up for vehicles up to six months to be delivered. So what are we willing to do? We wanted to create a process where we could take it in-house. We've talked to Don Hatten in Park City. Don Hatten owns both a Chevrolet dealership and a Ford dealership, and they can arrive, most vehicles that we order can arrive within 90 days as opposed to five to six months. Valley Center has contacted all four of our banks that we have a relationship with. Halsted has offered us 2.5% below New York Prime. New York Prime is a rate that changes on a daily basis. As of last week and today, it's still at 7.0%, so we can now finance leased-owned vehicles financing at 4.5%. Don Hatten has requested the first chance to purchase vehicles traded in. This would be an attractive option for us, as we would not have to avoid hiring somebody to take a vehicle to the auction process. In addition, auction fees can sometimes be 10 to 15% of the vehicle price. However, you do make more money at auction than you do often trading a vehicle in. I've talked to Don Hatten about this, and I'm like, if they give us a strong offer, we're going to do that, but I really don't want to go into the negotiation process for a few hundred bucks back and forth, and they go talk to the service manager, that game that they play. But we're still working that out, but we are going to give Don Hatten the ability to purchase our vehicles that we're trading in as a first option. Edens has also, Edens had talked to Brent before he left, they've also taught, said they'd be willing to take vehicles to auction if we need them to. Maintenance schedules for vehicles would be tracked in-house as opposed to Enterprise. We're looking at possibly purchasing inexpensive software to track some of this maintenance value if we need to. The finance team will handle the title work. This is going to be quite a bit of work. I think my two least favorite places on earth are the dentist's office and the title building, but we'll figure out how to make it work, work out. I'm going to ramp up quickly. We only purchased two vehicles in 2025. We had a rate plus a high tariff environment, made purchasing vehicles this year pretty cost prohibitive. I think this is going to ramp up quickly. I already know one from Neil from Lloyd's team are both going to need a vehicle probably in the next 60 days. There's a real world example. We had a police F-150, that's a newer one, involved in a collision with a deer just about two weeks ago. This vehicle had already had extensive hail damage, and the collision with the deer totaled out the vehicle. We took it to Don Hatten, Don Hatten gave us a price, they were able to track it on one of the hard-to-get Tahos, they gave us a price of $56,281 at a 4.5% interest rate. We did the contract through Halsted. My monthly payment is $1,056. If I had kept that through Enterprise, the interest rate would have been 10.08%. We would have had $1,982.46 in fees based on the last time we purchased a Tahoe. The monthly payment would have been quite a bit higher. In addition, there's a $6 a month monthly fee to track that vehicle. Total savings between the two, I've calculated $11,088.66 just on one vehicle. So pending, I kind of finished up with, we wanted to do a full analysis on the entire city's fleet, see if it makes sense, not only to do new vehicles going forward, but again, we have 29 vehicles. Does it make sense to actually bust up some of these contracts and try to move this over quickly? Every vehicle has a $400 lease termination fee. That seems to be the only thing I'm able to find at this point in time that we have to actually pay. So I actually worked on this all day today. I went through all 29 vehicles that we have contracts with. This is not up on the board, but I'm going to kind of read some additional notes. I said that the lowest rate I found was 9%. We have a lot of vehicles at 9%, the highest was at 15%. Eighteen of the 29 vehicles have enough money owed on them in addition, at least two years that I think that they'd be worth refinancing. All of them have $400 lease termination fees. I spoke with Sean Gordon, our auditor today, and I basically asked him, if we pay this off, are we able to essentially buy ourselves out of a lease, take that vehicle over to Halsted, and do another lease to own on the same vehicle? He said we are able to do that. Again, I've sent this off to Barry Arbuckle this afternoon. I can't find anything other than that $400 termination fee that would prevent us from doing that, these contracts. If we break all 18 contracts, move them over at 4.5% with Halsted, I have calculated that we're going to save just on those 188,600. So a lot of money on this. That is in addition to all the savings that I've kind of listed in that second paragraph there, that once we bring this fully in-house. So I listed 60 to 110,000, I think on a yearly basis, it's going to be at the higher end of that range, at least for a while, while we get these contracts out of there. So this process is still being developed. We have actually now done our first vehicle, and again, two more are going to come on pretty quickly, but I'm open to any comments, concerns, suggestions, or anything else, because again, this is something in process, but it is something I think that we're going to be able to get exactly the same thing that we have with our fleet management right now with the new vehicles, just a great thing that we have, that we're currently paying. I stand for any questions or anything else you'd like to discuss on this.
Oh, why Don Hatten? Is this something we should bid out like Mel Hamilton, Rusty Eck, other people? Or what's the thinking there?
The only reason that Don Hatten did this, or we chose Don Hatten, is we could do everything under one place. Anybody else, we're going to end up having to do the same relationship with two different places, because we couldn't really find anybody else around here that did both Fords and Chevys. We do have Conklin and Newton that does a lot of our vehicle repairs right now for hail damage. However, Conklin does not have a fleet management department, we did reach out to them. Don Hatten, they handle the entire city of Wichita account, they're really experts at this, and again, I gave him a test on that Tahoe, and I said, hey, we wrecked a police car today, he was able to find a hard-to-get Tahoe in Arkansas within 24 hours, and it was delivered to us. They're kind of going to bat for us right now and doing a really good job.
Okay, thank you. Dan?
Is there any contractual obligations that Don Hatten would have with us? Any contractual obligation, or any contracts we're going to have to sign with Don Hatten?
Right now, Don Hatten is just nothing more than, I've not signed a contract with them, I call them up, I tell them an order we need, and they're going to place the order, sell us the vehicle, and they, you know, kind of a verbal agreement, they would like first track or first crack it.
I'd just be curious, like, if they want anything further, if we continue, if we cancel the contract with Enterprise, what do they want instead? Well, but I like the savings. I like seeing that $100,000 a year savings.
I think the savings is going to be real, and right now, Don Hatten has not asked me to do any type of exclusive agreement or anything like that.
Okay.
There, and he's been very easy to work with, and he's currently right now trying to get us a vehicle for the Parks Department as well. So I don't think we're going to need to enter into a contract with them, I think a lot of this is just going to be helping each other out.
What about maintenance, like routine oil changes and anything else?
Take back in-house. Enterprise does give us kind of a schedule that shows up and flashes, it's time for this car to need an oil change, that's what I said, we may have to purchase some software to do that, it would be inexpensive, probably no more than a few thousand a year if we need to buy that, but for a while, we're going to see if we can do it with Excel and just meeting with the directors and saying, hey, Lloyd, you know, these F-150s, they're all due for oil changes this month, can you get that taken care of?
So we're going to need to hire a mechanic?
No. By, the new, the nice thing about these vehicles is they're all new, they're all under warranty, these are manufacturer warranties, so.
Okay, let me back up a second. So the maintenance that I'm thinking of is just like routine oil changes and fluid changes and such like that, are we going to take it to Don Hatten, have them do it for us, or are we going to?
Back to the Don Hatten thing, I will say, back to Councilmember Stam's question. So one of the reasons Don Hatten is, they're doing a lot of the purchases like this for other cities now that are not on Enterprise, there's not a lot of interest from other dealerships to do this kind of work, because they're really not making any money. They make a few hundred bucks, they're just not making much money at the dealership. For the oil changes, we'll be able to go anywhere we want. Right, right now with Enterprise paying that, that fee that we pay, we're limited to a few different dealerships that they work with, because they'll negotiate prices, which we can do on our own, or we can, you know, seek out, like, we're pretty limited right now on where we can go here in town. That's one of the reasons we started using Conklin, because they're part of Enterprise's program, and we're able to go up there and get the work done at a set price that they pre-negotiated, so. So we'll be able to go, it'll open up our possibilities on where to go.
Sounds good. I have no problem with using Conklin, I consider them local, so.
Dan?
I know a couple towns use a company called My Geotab. I think they're like $20 a month, up to $120 a month per vehicle. I can send you the information on it. I know Derby does it, I can't remember what other town, but they seem to be happy with, you can track, the more you want it to do, the more it's going to cost you, but if we're just wanting service, I think it's about that price.
And I also will point out, when I talked to Sean Gordon, our auditor today, he said that, you know, during COVID, Enterprise became very popular, and this was kind of a, we jumped on the trend that a lot of other cities did. He said especially up in the Kansas City region, there's a lot of cities and government agencies right now getting out of Enterprise. It's just, they're not willing to negotiate on that interest rate, and, you know, I personally would not enter my family into a 9 to 15% interest rate. So that's kind of what sent me down this path, is I like the service, I just think it's too expensive.
Any other questions? Thank you, Clint. Moving on to water treatment plant update.
Mayor and members of council, so tonight we have a brief update on the progress of the water treatment plant, and luckily I have here with me Mr. Reed Harmon, he's the project superintendent, so he can give us up to date and give us some more up-to-date information.
Sure. As you all know, we broke ground on the plant around July 1st. The first part of the project, the big part of the project to get completed was that backwash basin. Getting that backwash basin completed, tested, and backfilled allowed us to unlock the process building. Process building grade beams have been poured all the way around, one foot of aggregates have been installed. Once we reach that one-foot aggregate level, we're able to unlock chemical piping, carry pipe for all the chemicals, underground sanitary sewer, and underground electrical. Those activities are going on as we speak. The goal is to get that building slab poured by December 12th. Outside the building, we have continued on setting outside structures, manholes, stuff like that, working on underground process pipe, but the main area of focus right now is to get that building slab poured before it gets too cold. Once that happens, we'll bring in our masons, and they'll pour the masonry walls around the chemical building, around the chemical room, excuse me, and the admin space, and then the PMNB, the metal building, it'll start going up. Completion date on that right now is middle of March, probably, that building will be dried in. Obviously, we're hoping to improve that timeframe, but right now, it's kind of what it's looking like. Once that building gets dried in, it just, it unlocks everything. We can start working on interior process pipes, setting pumps, setting NF skids, and then green sand vessels are scheduled to deliver around June of next year. Once that green sand vessels go in, the ideas will be that the remaining underground pipe is all completed at that time, and once green sand vessels work is completed, then we can start on startup activities. I'll open up to any questions. Oh. I mean, like I said, we started around July, process building erection will be completed around, around March time, like I said. Oh, I did forget about the steel-bolted tank. So your clear well is a steel-bolted tank, those activities will start middle of March, and then hopefully completed by the end of April. The raw water line, I think we finally got a plan ironed out for it. That activity will start in July, or be completed in July, and then startup activities will be completed by February. Here's just a few pictures, this is looking west out of the process building, that pipe you see with the formwork around it, that is the backwash waste line, so when our, when we do a backwash in our filters, that line will take it over to the backwash basin. The picture on the right there is just some underground sanitary sewer. Inside that backwash basin, which is what's pictured there on the left, is shaping. So when the backwash water comes into that basin, that baffle wall you see there, all the, all these solids will fall to the bottom, and that shaping will carry it to a pipe that eventually takes it out to the river. That hit?
That's it.
Dan?
So as long as you can get all the concrete poured by December 12th before, or before it's really cold, you should stay on schedule.
So the, the goal of December, it's really just the basin slab or the building slab?
Okay.
That's, that's, we're ahead of schedule. That's just our goal, because you know how the weather is here, it could, yeah, it's awesome right now, but it could get bad in a hurry, so I really don't want that date to slip. We're working with our electricians, because they have the largest scope inside that building right now, working on manning them up a little bit more, and possibly working Fridays to really push those activities, so we can get that slab poured by the 12th. Because I'll be honest with you, right now, getting that slab in by the 12th is going to be a push. But that is our, that is our goal right now.
Told me what I wanted to hear in your own schedule.
We are. I mean, we all want to, I want to push that schedule forward, too. I want to get this thing built as soon as possible, so.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Reed. You bet.
Moving on to the public forum, is there anyone here from the public that would like to address the council on any item that's not on the agenda? If not, we'll move on. No appointments, oh, business. City administrator search committee report.
I want to start the report, but then if other members of the committee would like to share anything, they're more than welcome to. We started out the search and published it, that the first review would be October the 31st. At the end of the day, on that day, we had 22 cover letters and resumes that were submitted for consideration. The search committee then did meet, chose process of elimination, six candidates that we did an online Zoom meeting with, had some great, great candidates apply, it was tough to get it narrowed down to those six. And so then after those online interviews, the committee met again and chose the top three to go ahead and invite to an in-person interview process with a round robin type of process with the city council, department heads, and then also members of the community would serve on a, on a panel. All of those panels will have input on the candidates to help make the decision. So that's where we are at. We are calling for a special meeting next Monday, the 24th of November, to do these in-person meetings, because it is a special meeting, we will have a quorum, we will start the meeting, and then because we are going to be dealing with matters that our non-elected personnel will immediately go into an executive session for all the interviews. So I do have the call for a special meeting. It will begin at nine, and if, right after that, we will go into the executive session and kind of close down for the interview process. We will announce the, the three people that we are going to be doing the interviews with. I have compiled a very short bio on each of the candidates, no particular order, and at this point, they all know that their names are going to be announced. However, in the first one is Ethan Reimer. He does serve currently with the city of Halsted as their city administrator. He's worked with the city of Halsted since 2014. He started as a city clerk and the interim city administrator, and in 2017, he was promoted to the city manager position. He has lots of experience in public finance and budgeting, planning and zoning, code enforcement, floodplain administration, contract negotiation and management. He holds a master public administration degree and a bachelor of general studies from WSU. He is a board member of the United Way of Harvey and Marion Counties, the Halsted County Foundation, Halsted Lions Club, the Halsted Chamber of Commerce, and he has served as a past member of the City of Sedgwick County Planning Commission. The next one is Syndra Cassens. She began as the city administrator for the city of Anthony in 2016, and she has led all facets of city operations with work that centered on strategic budgeting, capital improvement planning, asset management, and ensuring the responsible stewardship of public resources while advancing long-term infrastructure and quality of life goals. Her priorities include economic and community development, housing initiative, business incentive programs, and grant-funded projects. She is a member of many organizations and is a Kansas certified public manager and a Kansas certified municipal clerk. Her community activities include a board member of Core Communities Organized Relief Effort, the Youth Empowerment Seminar Leadership Program, and has served as a past board member for the Barber County Leadership Program. The final one that we've invited is Brian Selcott. He is the manager at the city of Ottawa, Kansas, and he leads all municipal operations for a full-service city, including electric, water, wastewater, stormwater, streets, finance, neighborhood services, community development, and Public Works Division. Mr. Selcott has over 20 years' experience in municipal government, serving Sterling, Osage City, and the city of Goddard. He also holds a master of public administration degree and a bachelor of arts in political science from WSU. And he also is a member of the ICMA, KACM, and a past board member of KMU. We have chosen all of these based on exceptional service as a city administrator to continue the growth that Valley Center has experienced and will need their leadership moving forward. So I really feel good that the committee has chosen some very strong candidates to choose from. As I said, we will start the, the act. As I said, we will start the, the actual interview process with the meeting starting at nine. Prior to that, the three candidates will be taken around Valley Center to see the developments, the rec center, all the great and exciting things that Valley Center has going on right now, so that they come in with a sense of, of purpose. So that, that is the plan. Committee members, do any of you want to share or make any other statements?
I think you did a good job. You did good.
Yeah. Well, I, I do thank the, the guidance and the leadership from the committee. Ben Anderson, Jett Truman, Gina Gregory, and Matt Stam were great people to work with on narrowing it down and giving guidance. So that's the report I have, hopefully after next week. Hope it be good.
Thank you, Christie. Moving on to new business, Prairie Lakes Phase Five Professional Service Agreement with SEH.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Brent Clark with SEH.
No, that's not Kirsten.
You're not Samantha.
I changed a little bit. No, unfortunately, Samantha and Jake had to attend Bel Air's city council meeting, so I drew the short straw of coming here. But you know, I love you all, so it's great to see you now on this side of the world, which I do have to say real quick, fantastic job at narrowing down three amazing candidates for that opening. All three of them would serve the community very, very well. So you've done a great job in the search for the city administrator replacement. Moving on to the item before you is professional services agreement with SEH for the Phase Five of Prairie Lakes. This is a long time coming when it comes to getting everything all buttoned up on the Phase Five of Prairie Lakes. As you've had before you was the contracts with Pearson's been passed and approved. And then this is the agreement for SEH Services for Construction Administration, On-Site Project Representation, and then the material testing not to exceed $127,900. I'll stand for any questions on Prairie Lakes Phase Five.
Matt?
Is Phase Five the last phase?
No. I think there's, there could be eight phases in total with this. This is a far northern section of the development. This will then connect where Phase Four left off and then where Phase Three left off, is where this connection is. And then there's more to the south of Prairie Lakes, kind of, you know, not as far south as Neil's house, but just a little north of that area there. There's some more lots available down there.
Dale?
So this is, borders the basin that has been built?
Yes.
All right.
Any other questions or comments? To get a motion?
A move to approve professional services agreement with SEH for the Prairie Lakes Phase Five improvements in the amount of $127,900 and zero cents and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second?
Have a motion second to approve the Prairie Lakes Phase Five Professional Service Agreement. Any further discussion? Any questions? All in favor of the motion, signify raising your hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Moving on to Amber Ridge, Phase One.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. Here before you is the agreement to award Amber Ridge Phase One to Pareto Construction Services. This is an amount of $1,819,000 and some odd change. We finally, I believe the city did finally receive the letter of credit from the developer for this Phase One in Amber Ridge. This is the subdivision located right off of Fifth Street. It's located to the west of where the commercial area in Trails End, where the new school and all those things are going. This is that first phase in that, in that north, northwest area of Trails End. It's where the beautiful berms are located there. The homes are going to be right off of Fifth. And then it will also then connect to Wagon Wheel. And then Wagon Wheel will then connect to North Chisholm Trail, which North Chisholm Trail is a new north-south road that is located on the west side of the elementary school that also then connects to that roundabout and then Tanner Trail and back to Seneca. So I'm not sure if the full map is located in, in your packet there before you, but this is part of that Trails End, just the new residential, single-family homes, single-family homes will be located in this Amber Ridge Phase One. I'll stand for any questions.
Dale?
This one may not be for you, but it may be, you may be able to answer it. Previous agreements, we have them broken down into three different items and resolutions. Like, so this is for paving, water main, sanitary sewer, and erosion control. Is there?
And so this is the, the construction agreement with the contractor. Usually it's one agreement. I think you might be thinking of the specials when it comes to the special assessments that are broken into water, sewer.
Maybe that's what it is as a resolution.
Yep, as resolutions. So this one is just the agreement with the, with the contractor. And just so you know, too, with Pareto, during the, the bidding of that, there was a little bit of confusion when it came to when we publicly opened them. And so we did work that out with Pareto, who typically doesn't GC or is a general contractor on everything. Usually they're sub and they focus primarily on the, the concrete work side of things. But, but their sub is going to be doing the utility work. Apex is well-vetted, has done other work in this area, and so they are reputable firm. And the total amount was still less than the next bidder for the concrete side of.
How many phases does this one have?
Really, it would depend upon what the developer ultimately decides to do. There could be, you know, three phases, four phases. We really haven't gotten to that point yet. Right now, we're looking at that first phase to see what the absorption rate will be for this type of home. These are going to be in the, that 350-plus range home. And so kind of seeing what the market can handle before they start the next phases. And it could be all, you know, just two phases, could be four phases, just not sure.
Any questions or comments? Get a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approval of agreement with Pareto Construction LLC for Amber Ridge Phase One improvements in the amount of $1,819,695 and 75 cents and authorize mayor to sign.
Second?
Have a motion second to approve the Pareto Construction as Amber Ridge Phase One project. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify raising your hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Moving on to Amber Ridge Phase One Professional Services Agreement with SEH.
Good evening once again, Mayor and Council. Sorry, you got three items back to back to back with, with me, I'm working on them. Amber Ridge Phase One, this is the SEH Professional Services Agreement, very similar to the one you, Prairie Lakes Phase Five. This is for the construction staking and inspection services and, and materials testing. So I will stand for any questions, and this is for Amber Ridge Phase One that you just approved in the last motion.
Any questions or comments?
Can I get a motion to approve?
I move to the professional services agreement with SEH for the Amber Ridge Phase One improvements in the amount of $184,900 and authorize mayor to sign.
Second?
Have a motion second to approve the Amber Ridge Phase One Professional Service Agreement. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify raising your hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Thank you.
Deja vu. Moving on to item D, acceptance of Section 5310 Sub receipt grant A agreement for senior bus.
If you'll recall, back in April, there was a proposal to accept a grant to purchase a bus for the senior center. And so now we have gotten the final agreement. It actually is a little bit less than what the original due to lower cost of the bus that we are doing. So now this is just the, the acceptance and the approval of the award. So if anyone has questions, I will try to answer them. If not, I ask for approval.
Gina?
I just want to say, there's a whole lot of paperwork that goes into this grant.
Yes.
But worth it.
Yeah. Charlene went above and beyond making sure she contacted several different agencies and individuals down in Sedgwick County to make sure that all the Ts were crossed and all the Is were dotted. So big, big shout out to Charlene.
Any other questions or comments? Motion to approve?
Motion to approve agreement between the city of Wichita and the city of Valley Center for the purchase of the van for senior citizen activities and authorize mayor to sign. Costs for the city in the amount of $18,843.
Second?
Have a motion second to approve the grant agreement for the senior bus. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor of the motion, signify raising your hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Moving up, acceptance of the agreement for the 85th and Broadway Roundabout.
Good evening. What we have here is a agreement document between KOD or WAMPO, state of Kansas, Sedgwick County, Park City, and Valley Center to enter into a partially WAMPO-funded project to build a roundabout at 85th and Broadway. Basically, what we are doing, our portion, what we are committing to is just to do what we can, commit what right of way we have. We have right of way in this project, so we need to commit well for what right of ways we have. I know one concern, I've already spoken with the city of Park City. Our new sign, welcome sign out there is completely outside of the construction limits, so there's no concern there. It's not going to be affected by this. The layout of this roundabout will be very similar to the one at 77th and Broadway, so with the dedicated right turns and so that southwest corner will not be as intrusive or won't be.
Dale?
Speaking of the sign, is there, I don't remember, is there water or sprinkler system over there?
Yes.
Is it going to be affected also or is it? That, that should be easier to move than the whole sign.
From what I was told, it's well outside of the construction limits.
That sounds great.
If they are, we can, we can pretty easily get those sprinklers.
Are they going to build this one better than the last one?
Let's hope so.
Easy deal. Gina?
Okay. As I understand this, our, our cost is basically getting utilities relocated?
Well, so if you read in there, depending what the local utilities are, many of those utilities are relocated by, at the cost of the utility themselves.
Okay.
Let's say if there's gas or electric, they relocate them at their.
Okay. Thank you.
We just have a water line, don't we? Or is that the rural waters?
Don't have a water line out there.
Not a rural water line?
They do rural water.
Okay, that'd be rural water. Okay. Dale?
All right, one more question. I don't remember reading this. It starts in the spring? Is that right or is it?
Yeah, the, the start.
Okay, I'm just.
We're just committed to.
Thinking ahead of.
So they can get funding and start the design process.
Okay. Just thinking ahead of, that's going to be a massive redirection of a lot of traffic. I know Park City doesn't use a lot of it, but we do.
Any other questions or comments?
I make a motion to approve agreement between Secretary of Transportation, the city of Park City, Sedgwick County, and the city of Valley Center and authorize mayor to sign.
Second?
Have a motion second to approve, accept the agreement for the 85th and Broadway Roundabout. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify raising your hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Thank you.
Moving on to item F, ordinance 1440-25, update to vacate of A Street.
Mayor and Council, this is a replacement ordinance for an ordinance really you passed about a month ago, six weeks ago. What happened was, in the original ordinance that you had, there was attached at the first reading, an attachment which was two documents, which was the surveyor's legal description and also a, a lot plat of that description also. So there was a two-page attachment that should have been attached to the ordinance every time it was reviewed by you and published. And, and published in the newspaper, that two pages should have been attached to that , too. But it was not, those two pages were not attached to the publication nor to the ordinance of the second reading, which was part of our record that you approved. So basically, what we're doing is we're coming up with a new ordinance, revoking that old ordinance, but passing the ordinance with the same language, but with the documents attached. And once that's published, then that will allow this ordinance to go forward. We'll still have to do another resolution confirming that that's the city's action. But we need to do this to have a, I think, title protected for the people in the future to this real estate. So that's why I didn't want to overlook this and go forward without that correction. Stand for any questions? We'd recommend waiving the first reading since you've seen this. This is the third time, but it's the same ordinance as we passed earlier.
Matt?
I should have asked this question the first time. I kind of spaced it off. It says on Ford, no other easement shown per agreement. There are no water, sewer stuff in there that we need to retain in easement? Or are they outside the right of way? Or is there anything even going through there?
Nothing in there.
I didn't know if there was or not, but, okay. Thank you.
I guess I have a question. After we pass this agreement or relinquish this property, what do you, are we going to have a land grab here or how's this?
No, the property is going to Reserve B. That's the, that's the area that it was taken from, so it goes back to the Reserve B property owner.
Oh, okay. All right. So it's theoretically already divided. All right. Thank you.
Motion to waive first reading of ordinance 1440-25 and approve ordinance which authorizes vacating of a portion of Avenue A now called C Street.
Second?
Have a motion second to approve ordinance 1440-25. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify raising your hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Moving on to item D, discussion regarding Sunflower Valley eligibility for housing incentive program.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. This, so Sunflower Valley is the duplex development located south of Ford Street, kind of south of the intersection of Ford and Dexter. It was originally developed in five lots that were planned to have duplexes. On August 1st, 2023, the city council gave a preapproval for the development to be included in commercial housing incentive program. So they still had to develop and still apply for the commercial housing incentive, but they just wanted to make sure if they developed that, that they would be able to get the commercial housing incentive. Since then, lots three and four have been subdivided and with the condominium lot split process so that each duplex is its own parcel of land. And the developers are wanting to do the same with the other lots of that development. With that, developers have came to me asking if they are eligible for the housing incentive Several of these duplexes have already been rented, they've been rentals. The housing incentive program is for first occupant homeowners of single-family residential. Our single-family residential, the, the housing incentive program and the commercial housing incentive program do not specify detached or attached. So we do not have a declared, clear definition as own house would qualify for the housing incentive program based on our definitions and our ordinances. So I've talked with Christie and Clint about this and felt that this was something that needed to come to council for discussion because we didn't feel that this was in our purview to approve or disapprove of them going into that program on our own. So we want to bring it for you, before you to see if the council wants these to be involved in the housing incentive program or if, if they are to remain commercial, if they are multifamily housing.
Dale?
Is it the same owners that we gave preapproval to in twenty twenty-three?
Uh, no, there are now several owners. I think.
Sorry, just one more thing. At that time, it was one person owned the entire area.
That is my understanding, yes. And they, they, before they started building, they sold, like, maybe lot two was sold to a different developer and lot three was sold to a different developer. So there's multiple owners within this development.
Because the idea of the commercial is for.
For multifamily.
Multifamily, what these are, and then the idea for the housing incentive program is just, single-family residence is not duplexes or multiplexes.
Correct. The only caveat I would say is, again, that the housing incentive program does say, single-family homes, but our zoning code has a definition for, single-family attached, which would be a townhouse, and, single-family detached, which would be a home on its own parcel without sharing a wall with another building. So.
You know how I feel about single-family versus multifamily. And I'm not a big fan of the commercial housing incentive program to begin with, so.
I personally, not either. So.
Ben?
So they're selling these off. I, I don't feel like these, these fall into the qualifications of what we set forth with these two agreements. Once they're, once they're sold to individuals, to me, they're, they're not qualified, because that, that was the whole point of the chip. When we had the chip, it was, they owned the whole thing. Then I want you, you're selling it, and, and both of those, it's only to first.
Owner.
The, the first owners, basically. So that's my feeling on that, on this, this particular situation.
Gina?
So if a townhouse is built, I'm assuming adjoining two townhouses, but an individual is going to buy this townhouse, is that correct?
Correct. That, well, that is the option on the table. So someone could buy both sides and keep it as, they're on their own parcels, but they could keep it as a duplex and rent out both sides. Or you could have two separate owners, whether they are owner occupants or landlords. It, it could go either way.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
I'm getting lost in all my papers.
I entertain a motion.
We, we don't need one, do we?
Just for discussion.
Don't need one.
I'd say, we, we can get a consensus at least, if, if, if the feeling is to go to let a housing incentive be approved for it, or, or not, I guess would be the, what we'd like to see today.
I'm not in favor of it.
I'm not either.
No.
That, that's a consensus.
Guess it's just going to die.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for bringing it to us.
Consent agenda.
Nope.
We've got one more.
Oh, we've got one more. Resolution four eight oh four dash twenty-five, renewal of housing incentive on commercial.
All right, good evening again. So just a little bit of background. The housing incentive program began in twenty seventeen. So far, seventy-five properties have been approved into the program, which currently expires, the entry into the program expires December twenty twenty-five, which basically means the home has to be completed, and they have to have their application in by the end of the year to be entered into the program. That program is for owner-occupied, single-family homes. They receive a five-year, one-hundred percent city portion of property tax rebated to them. We currently have multiple subdivisions with eligible lots. Veil Point, which is, is in the process, if it was, if we renew the program, would have a hundred and eighty-one lots eligible. Rio Bella, thirty-four, Sotera twenty-five, approximately, or undeveloped in Sotera. Arbor Valley, about thirty-three or left. Harvest Place, about seventy-eight, single-family homes, and High Point would have five lots available. So total of three hundred and fifty-six lots that could be eligible for this program going forward. The commercial housing incentive program began shortly after in twenty twenty. So far, three properties have been approved into the program, which currently expires, again, the end of the year. This program is specific to new multifamily residences, and that can be two-family and more, and offers a three-year, one-hundred percent city portion of property tax rebate. Currently, the Harvest Place development has about a hundred and twenty-six lots planned for duplex development. And my understanding is, when that development came through, they kind of had a conditional approval as well on the commercial housing incentive. So those, that's kind of the history and background. The economic development board did review this at their meeting a couple of weeks ago, and they did, the economic development board's discussion and recommendation to bring to the city council was to renew the program for two additional years, so through December of twenty twenty-seven. And they would like to see the build completion timeline extended from twelve months to eighteen months. Part of that discussion was primarily around more of the custom-built homes, because twelve months, some of the homes, it really are tied on that timeline with labor, and supplies and things like that having some fluctuations. So they thought going out to the eighteen months was a little bit better of a timeline. One of our economic development board members also is a banker, and he made the comment that construction loans, at least through their bank, are good for eighteen months before they have to go to permanent financing. So they thought that was a good lineup to have our timeline match what a construction loan timeline could be. Otherwise, I would recommend approval of the resolution, but I'd stand for any questions.
Ben?
I'll give a little background, a little more. The, I'm on the economic development board, and discussing this, with the number of lots that we have coming online, the unsurity of the, the market in the next two years, and us not wanting to get caught holding the bag, we need to do everything we can. And so it was the economic development board's feeling of extending this for two years would, would help with getting those lots filled with homes. So that was kind of the break down, and, and you actually, I had written down the extension from twelve to eighteen months on that because of the construction loan. So you covered that part, but economic development board didn't want to not renew it. They wanted to bring it here to let the council make the decision. But the feeling from, from the board was that it would be a good idea to extend them for at least two years because of the sheer volume of, of projects we have going on. I'll have.
Dale?
Remind me why the housing incentive and the commercial housing incentive are in the same resolution?
That's how it's been done historically. They originally, the original resolution in twenty seventeen was for the housing incentive program. And when that renewed in twenty twenty, I believe it was, that's when the commercial housing incentive was added to the resolution, and every time it's been renewed, they've been in one joint resolution.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I get a motion?
I move to approve resolution eight oh four dash two-five, renewal of the HIP, CHIP.
Second. Have a motion and second to approve resolution eight oh four dash twenty-five. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, six for raising your right hand? All opposed, same sign?
Just because of the commercials.
Motion carried.
You voted against it, just because of the commercials part.
I did. Sorry, I wasn't very strong, second.
More of a third.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Got a duo second. All in favor of the motion, six for raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Okay, moving on to staff reports.
I'll back up. All right, well, since it was just part up there, the, I just wanted to make sure you all are aware, and Gina might be mentioning this as well. Hometown Christmas is coming up December sixth. Well, I can announce that again at the next council meeting, but please mark your calendars for that. It's fifth, thank you. Sorry, fifth. And then, our department is fully staffed again. Tyson Turhune started last Wednesday as our code enforcement officer and infrastructure officer. So, so far, he's doing great.
Any comments, questions? Okay, thank you, Kyle. Neil?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Just a couple items to bring to your attention this evening. As I mentioned at our last meeting, the Lions Park Playground, we had some construction, some repair work, not construction, work being done over there to the play surface, the equipment itself, and we put a resealer on the rubber surfacing portion of that. That's all been completed. The work's done over there, so the playground's back open and for use. We did self-perform all those repairs in-house. So that was, again, I mentioned last time, that's a big cost savings to be able to self-perform those specific types of work. They typically cost quite a bit more going out to a contractor for those types of things, and they seem to be specialized. So the other thing is, is brought to your attention, or wanted to bring to your attention, is that the Ford Street welcome sign, the repairs to the base that you guys approved last week, is scheduled for December tenth to get started on that. So we're looking forward to getting that project underway. And the roofing repairs from the hailstorm, some of those repairs with Far Hall Roofing have begun. They've started work on the old Public Works Building, sealing that building up, getting rid of the holes in the skylights from the hill, so that works can carry out some operations that they've gone on, got going on over there with moving some salt, salt operations in there for winter preparedness this, this year. And they'll be starting on one of the buildings out of the Headworks, or out at the waste treatment plant on the Headworks Building. The rest of the shingled roofs, they're watching the weather, but they're looking at trying to get started with a lot of the shingled roofs here in the next three weeks, roughly three weeks out. So they do, they have assured me that they will be watching the weather. They need forty degrees and rising for the type of shingle that they've got, that they're planning to install. That was one of my concerns. So I wanted to make sure that you all are aware of that as well. Other than that, I'd stand for any questions.
Dale?
On the shingled roofs, is there any reason why we couldn't wait till the spring, as long as they're not leaking?
Yeah, it certainly could be.
Okay.
Something that we could.
Just thinking of, the warmer it is, the better those things seal.
Thank you, Neil. Lloyd?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to give you a quick update on the complaint you heard last council meeting, at least some part of it. So the, the rooster complaint you heard, that falls under my department. So we did, we have issued citations there. There's actually a trial supposed to have already happened, and it continues. We've got a trial set for the next trial date, and new citations have been issued. So we continue to work that and try to fix that problem in the area.
I'll stand for your questions.
Questions? Thank you. Rodney?
Okay, the most difficult update. Water Treatment Plant, we did have a Seneca Street Progress meeting today. The biggest thing probably right now is, tentatively, weather permitting, they plan to start pouring the deck on that bridge Saturday. The water line redirect, redirecting that water line away from the bridge, they're looking at probably starting on that December first. Trails in Phase One, they're currently working on bringing their sanitary sewer across and tying in to start bringing that west. And Rio Bella, we drove by today. Most of the roads are paved. They're almost paved all the way out to West Street. I think after that, that they just have some finished grading to do out there. Drove by Harvest Place. There's, I think, Harvest Place Phase One, most of the water line and, and utility work is done. They're working diligently on roads out there, putting down base for roads. And then, the other update on that complaint last week, when he said raw sewage, I did call that person to get some clarification on that. And he was, doesn't think it's still happening, but he was referring to possibility of an RV on a neighboring lot, coming out of an RV. Kyle, that's been brought to Kyle's attention, and we will be.
Any questions? Thank you, Rodney. Gates not here. Barry? Dennis? Plant? Chrissy?
I just wanted to give an update. We are right in the middle of open enrollment for our employees to be enrolling in all of their benefits for twenty twenty-six. We take the concerns of our employees very seriously, and the decision was made to change our third-party administrator. We currently have Allied that processes our payments, and we are changing to a company that will provide much better services, what we've been guaranteed. So they have this week to enroll in our benefits, and so that's always an exciting time, stressful time, especially short window, trying to fit it in before Thanksgiving, getting the rates, getting the benefit guide, getting all of that online. So I think we've got it all figured out.
Thank you, Christie. Moving on to governing body reports. We don't have anything, except just everybody have a safe and happy Thanksgiving. We won't meet till after Thanksgiving now, so. Ron?
I have nothing.
Robert?
Yeah, I just wanted to remind everyone of another event that's happening Monday night, the twenty-fourth. It is the annual pie auction out at the Highlands. This is to, to, to bring in funds for the Valley Center Community Foundation. I would strongly suggest getting your ticket and getting out there. That ticket includes dinner. There's also some raffles. And then there's the absolutely amazing pie auction that happens thereafter. If you've not attended one of these, you need to, because there are some very creative individuals that come up with some absolutely amazing pies, and then the way those pies are presented, it is just amazing. So I, I will have a pie in this auction this year. I haven't done it for a couple of years, but I will have a pie in this auction. So please come out and see the, the antics that may occur in my show of my pie. So please come out and enjoy the fun.
Thank you, Ben.
I have nothing.
Gina? Dale?
I have nothing, thank you.
Chris?
I have nothing, thank you.
Matt?
Our idea is horrible. I make a motion to adjourn.
I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and second to adjourn. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, six for raising your right hand? All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Meeting adjourned.